I hereby call the Youth Commission meeting to order on Thursday, February 6, 2025 at 6:06 PM. The current secretary, can you please conduct a vote call?
Yes, Youth Commission member Ben.
Here.
Youth Commission member Perdias.
Here.
Youth Commission member Hernandez.
Here.
Youth Commission member Rittens.
Here.
Youth Commission member Ramirez.
Here.
Vice Chair Benitez.
Here.
And Chair Malcom.
Here.
You have, records show that you have seven members present, you have four.
Thank you. Next of the, on the agenda, we have your pleasure allegiance. If able, would you please join me in standing for the pleasure allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the San Ana Employee of the Year. I invite top stat full supervisor.
All right, I would like to have the Youth Commission, please join me back here. As you guys know, we, this is like a special one here today, so every month we give out a full-time employee of the month and a part-time employee of the month and every quarter you probably volunteer probably in the quarter. We do it for both Parks Recreation and San Antonio, the San Antonio San Francisco. Today, with our crowd, ladies and gentlemen, full-time zookeepers, you know, it is my pleasure to invite the student of our system.
Um, the then, there was the lighting, every national voice, and that voice in year of 2024. Jen combo acquired leadership with potential to animal care team position her as a sound, well, to be the skilled mentor, a trust confident, and a valuable team member. Jen began her Santa Anna's career almost two decades ago as an intern and brought into the state to pursue living of working in the March with large mammals like elephant and lion. After some, after some cold wind, wind winters, Jen joined her native school house into the then, and we prepared a dedicated member of the animal care team for the past sixteen years. In 2023, Jen was promoted to zookeeper second in the lead position within the animal care. It is in this position that Jen has truly evolved. She has demonstrated her leadership skills as a mentor to a new generation of animal care professionals, sharing her passion for animal training and. Twenty twenty-four brought a new opportunity and challenged us physically, a team of veterinary professionals from other states, kids in the zoo to perform artificial, like the nation or repair. Also, a third is stored in the south of the farm in the United States, yet their numbers have declined tremendously and breeding is largely typically lobbying institution. The procedure required multiple hormone injections and for both cats to be lived and identified at the zoo hospital while appearing to strict timeline. Jen worked diligently for several months, trained both cats voluntarily, received the necessary injections, and prepared for the end study procedures. It was a huge and important task, and she truly rose to the occasion. It was the first for the then, and if you were not having possible without Jen's commitment and skill. It is an honor to present this award to Jen for dedication and our role in 2024.
All right, I think I speak on behalf of your team here how grateful we are for the hard work, the dedication, bringing day in day out, and just the friendliness and humbleness that you have shown, not just for me, but anyone that you come to. So, I'm just bringing something, and you will see that again, very, we're very proud. Jen, and grateful appreciation of your dedication, service to the community, and continuous contributions to the success of the San Antonio Parks Recreation and Youth Service agency. We truly appreciate your hard work and commitment. Wait, Jen. Jen.
I don't take your side.
We didn't take the side of my side. I know, I'm looking at her. One, two, Ben. Well, I think there's more. So you did, when you buy, you think the start costs? Eight, seven, eight, seven, or dinner on me. Uh, council of commission, I know we do want to spend a trip with our team, I'm good, correct, still? So we'll work it out, but guys, this is our, this is our new team, and they are phenomenal, they're amazing, they have just year after year continued to grow. And we're excited to show you the place up there with the leadership of Ethan and Tim and all the stuff.
All righty, next we have the public comment section. This is the time, the commission to receive comments on the public comments. We will not accept any additional request of speaker cards once we get the public comment section. If you are not ready, please submit your request to the current secretary. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. For speakers on Zoom, you must have nine on your phone or click the button labeled raise your hand now. Click me in the speaker queue when the public comments commence. The current secretary, do you have any public speakers in person?
There are none.
Do we have any public speakers on Zoom?
I've got this kind of mention.
This is, next is the consent calendar, items one and two. Commission members, are there any comments that you wish to put on the consent calendar? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I have a motion to approve the consent calendar. I'm sorry.
Madam Secretary, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, motion by Youth Commissioner Perdias, seconded by Youth Commissioner Benitez, to approve items one and two of the consent calendar. Youth Commission member Ben. Youth Commission member Perdias. Youth Commission member Hernandez. Youth Commission member Ramirez.
I approve.
Youth Commission member Ramirez.
I approve.
Vice Chair Benitez. Chair Malcom.
I approve.
Vote is seven, I am zero, may that motion carry us.
Next on the agenda is the business calendar. I will turn it over to Youth Commissioner Ramirez to lead the special on items four and four.
Good evening to everybody, thank you for being here. Um, so I propose this, I think, or I wanted to put this on agenda for a little while. It was on, um, a proposal for a youth recognition program, and it was really fitting on behalf of this recognition program today. Because I wanted to approve something similar, so there are a good number of institutions here in our city that are really benefiting, are really making ways for you to get involved. Or to really grow and to really just flourish and as it goes for the future, whether, whatever path they choose going to. And so I just think that, you know, we as the, as Youth Commission, you know, we're almost representing, we're the voice for the youth, we should be able to really create something similar to what the city council does in that creating a sort of recognition program for different institutions or for different people who are really making a difference and impact for the youth. And so I just wanted to really bring this idea to the table and just ask for input and see if, you know, this is something we could really get approved and get some, um, going.
Well, I really, I really like this idea. But obviously, getting the tickets are hot, so what do you have to do with this idea?
Well, I guess, I guess, and again, I've got, I've got, I've got Brian here, and I've got Tim here, um, I guess, what are you, I mean, are you looking for organization? Because we currently, you know, we do, you know, volunteers a month, that are people within our organization, whether the coaches, whether something like that, I guess, what is, what are you looking to do?
Yes. Okay, yeah, so it's just any organization or any individual who we see is really making an impact on our youth population. And so it could be kind of what a council member does is that they, they see, oh, I see that this organization or this individual is really making a difference in the lives of our San Antonio citizens, of our youth, and just presenting kind of what we did today, a sort of, you know, certificate of recognition, a short speech on what they're doing, and just bringing that sort of recognition to them.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, so similar, we do a council when they have, you know, the mayor recognizing so and so for this, uh, you know, word of one, or two, or three, something like that, to where you guys would bring up, you want to, for the contribution to the community?
Yeah.
Okay, I can look into that and work with our state clerk and see if that's something we can do as a youth commission. So, absolutely, we can, I will look at that and we will report back to you on it.
Thank you.
Right?
And then for item four, it was something that came up because I've been speaking with, um, again, some classmates, peers that are in the city. And something that I've interviewed a lot is that we don't really provide a lot of opportunities for youth to get sort of educational opportunities. I know the library does offer some opportunity, but once a month here and there, but something sort of concrete, like a program that youth can really get involved in if they want to, say, go into a career in law or go to a career in STEM. Um, I know that there are students who go outside of the city to really look for those opportunities, but they don't really stay here because there's not really much for them. And so again, it's just bringing up that proposal, if there's anything we can do to get a a program started, get something started so that our youth are just really encouraged, feel encouraged by the city really exploring their education.
Okay, um. Thank you, I think. Um, a couple of follow-up questions, uh, Commissioner, um, with regards to what you're talking about, is it more of a, like, a workforce development program? So, again, exposing, um, young people, I would imagine, um, maybe sophomore and up, you know, in high school and everything like that. And giving them via the pathways to connect with somebody, either within the community, business community, professional communities, to maybe like do job shadowing and everything, and you mean, is that?
That, that's, that's, that's a, one, one way, yeah, um, it's just ways to, for the youth person to really see that, you know, there's opportunities open to them to really explore their careers, explore a possible field of study. Um, I know other cities have, you know, they'll, they'll host programs where they're all able to go on field trips, or they'll have guest lectures come in and talk to them about a certain career or a certain field of study, and, um, it's just something that's not really present here in San Ana, and I just want to really advocate and see if there's anything we can do to kind of offer something ourselves.
Well, we, we, it, it, it's a great idea, and we have had, um, programming, um, that has happened, most recently going all the way back to last summer. So there was a teen summer camp that took place this last summer at Garfield, uh, Community Center. And essentially, it's, it's, uh, combined with a lot of other efforts, right? So, all of you are familiar with the teen excursion program, right? Okay, so that's one component of our team programs. Um, but in order to qualify or to get priority registration for some of the bigger excursions, like to Disneyland or to pancakes, we just want some pancakes to see Wicked and everything, what our team, our youth and teen, um, uh, section does is they provide other opportunities for teens and youth to interface with, uh, individuals that come from, um, outside, uh, work, uh, and employment, uh, and career fields, right? So during the summertime, I know during, um, summer camp, uh, there was a member from Tesla that actually came in, or SpaceX, excuse me, SpaceX, that actually came in um, as a professional that worked for the organization that talked to the teens that were there, um, about that matter, but me as deputy director, I want to go address to the, the, the teens and share with them my life in public, uh, service and what that means and the avenues that are associated with that. Uh, I know that the gentleman from Suavecito, the, the owners and the founders were actually guest speakers that came and also addressed the youth. So there are elements that exist right now. I think it's because it's so, um, uh, acute and it's delivery, because again, I, all of you, I'm sure are aware of the teen excursion program, but all the other programs that are coming out of Garfield Community Center, it, it's really by word of mouth where we're, we're doing the promotion and the marketing of that and stuff like that. Another example is that we're probably, I would say, probably two weeks away or a month away from actually having our first esports lab at Garfield Community Center. So we, over the last year and a half, we spent a lot of resources and assets to get all these computers so that that really can create a gaming type of situation like what you're seeing at Century and other, um, high schools throughout the district and everything. But we're going to go a step further to where coding is going to be available and all that type of stuff, so uh, we're slowly making the pivot into that direction, but the idea is heard and we can, you know, find other avenues to maybe engage the business community and other, the professional community to see if there's a more robust way where we can do it in them too.
Thank you, okay, and then also, Deputy Director Fisher, he's going to give us some comments too.
I can add, um, so representing the zoo, and then also with me is the curator, Teresa Lauren. Her, uh, she's the one that actually manages the program at the zoo, the San Antonio Youth Employment Program, uh, that offers opportunities in different businesses, I know they're at the library, uh, and we have, I think it's about four hundred fifty, five hundred hours, uh, in the cycle, and you get different opportunities in different businesses, um, at the zoo. It's helping to develop into personal skills for public education and for the patients about animals in the pathway. Uh, and we had a number of people, uh, youth that have moved on to part-time positions at the city of San Ana from the Youth Employment Program. Uh, so that's been a great opportunity, some people, it doesn't resonate with them, they've got other opportunities. Uh, I don't know to full extent of all the businesses, uh, that are involved in that program. I know there's different city entities, there are departments that are a part of that program, but that's, uh, that's through the work centers, through the work center, and it's, it's a really good program, and you get paid for doing it too. Um, so I think, uh, I think Deputy Director, kind of, Brian, he'll talk about that from the library or something.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, thank you, Ethan, um, yeah, from, from the library's perspective, we, we we definitely work with the San Ana Youth Employment, uh, Program, the Save Employment, and I know, um, some of our, our previous youth commissioners have also taken advantage of that, I believe, or or, and lots of other youth across the city, and we each will engage a lot, we have things happening at the library, we do our own programs, we'll have, you know, um, uh, youth internship opportunities, uh, that will engage kids in STEM, we've had them in the past, uh, twenty-four, twenty-three, we've had programs like that in the past years, um. I really would encourage you to, to look towards the San Ana Youth Employment Program, okay, with the businesses across the city and in, in the area. I think that is a great way, and like Ethan said, they pay, uh, they pay it well, and there's lots of information, it'll be the website, um, and we can, uh, also assist with connecting to the works.
Thank you, thank you for the comments, it is my, yeah, my, that was my concern that there, youth aren't really aware of the opportunities that were available for them, because a lot of kids, well, from high school, at least, a lot of kids want to go into STEM areas, they want to really get involved in engineering or science or stuff like that, but when they look for opportunities, they don't really find what they want, a formal STEM program in San Antonio, they want kids want to go to a lot of, they only, program I'm aware of is only available at San Ana High School. And so they want to find specific programs for these specific areas, they're not finding them there, but if there is connections out there, there is ways to find those programs out there, it's really great to hear from, to really relay that dedication.
If I may, one other opportunity for, uh, folks that are interested in medical, one of the programs that we have out of our aquatics section is the Emergent Lifeguard Year Program. And again, it's basically giving you the opportunity to see what a lifeguard does, um, firsthand before you actually commit to being a lifeguard, right? There's a lot of hesitancy when it comes to water, um, but our, our aquatic scheme has worked with, quite successfully with a lot of folks your age to get them used to the water, get them trained to be an actual lifeguard, and now they're on staff with us during our summer seasons and everything like that. The only reason I, I mentioned that is that, um, aquatics and lifeguarding, it, it's basically springboarded into a lot of different areas of public service and, and the medical field for that matter. I don't think that there's any other opportunity where a fifteen and a half year old can be trained in advanced CPR, advanced CPR, uh, first aid, Title twenty-two parameters where you're getting certified and everything, and the great thing about Title twenty-two is that police officers, firefighters, and EMS folks have to get the same Title twenty-two certificate, right? So again, here you are, fifteen and a half, potentially getting hands-on experience and being trained the same way that there's three, there's three fields right there that are career, uh, um, opportunities, right? If you were inclined to go in those fields, but even beyond that, imagine having that training and then wanting to go in the medical field, nursing, you know, potentially being a doctor or anything like that. At fifteen and a half, if you were exposed to that and you understood how the body works and how to do, uh, preventative care up until, you know, the point where EMS gets online, I mean, that's another opportunity that already exists with nursing and everything too. So I mentioned that just because there are, there should be segments that you guys can look at, and I think, uh, Executive Director Scott is going to point out in our tutorial where, where you can find those.
Yeah, so I handed you guys, this is our latest culture, just came out last week, week before, if you turn to page twenty-four, we're talking about the aquatics that, uh, Deputy Director Pagano was talking about. And then if you also go over to, uh, page twenty-nine, there's a couple of, of programs there as well too. If you just flip over to the next page, you can see we offer a lot of some things too, like learn to sew, and, you know, pride back to their stuff that, a lot of programs out there. And like, so one more thing, the reason we have this culture is we're trying to promote our programs throughout the city, we're looking to do ways to get people to subscribe and mail in and stuff like that, so just wanted to share that with you, and like I said, you know, we can always do a better outreach to the schools that, like what you're saying, to hey, we have these programs here in the city, and I know Brian does it, and, you know, I know Ethan does it, and, you know, we're doing our best, so, but we can always look for ways to push that information out.
So, and just one last thing, uh, in, in the flyers that I've provided you, that I do each month, we have there, one of the flyers is an opportunity to volunteer. Volunteering is a great opportunity to get involved right away, help us at the library, set up programs, work with our staff. Uh, we have STEM programs happening every month, so it's a great way, just in, in terms of if you want to get involved uh, with the community and, and doing things with STEM or, uh, ESL, or helping people out like that. Just volunteering, either whether it's with our Parks and Recreation or with the library is a great way to get some good experience outside of the state or.
And then if you guys, you know, like, I know Emily always, you know, reaches out to me for the opportunity to volunteer, you know, at our events, and we're always asking organizers out, so we continue to do that, and if you guys, you know, know people that want to, you know, reach out to us, you know, we can always do volunteers, you know, come hang out with.
I believe, right now, it was like, make questions or comments. Um, okay, so my first comment would be going back to what Asian was thinking about opportunities. I think it'd be more like a matter of within us during every meeting discussing how we get our resources, and I say this because for me at my school, I have like this website that my, makes like an activity that she creates, and it's been posted on our, like, um, Friday seminar class, which everyone kind of has access to. And that's how like so many people at my school get amazing opportunities, and matter of fact, it's how I got it, so my opportunity. So that said, I think it might be more of a discussion between us here as youth commission to see how we get our resources and how we possibly can find them, because at the end of the day, we're the ones representing, if you really think about it, we're all from different schools, so I know. Yeah, but, I forget, you guys are being, sorry, I was like, but majority of us are from different schools. So what I'm thinking is like, since we're all from different schools, and so obviously the way how we get our resources is different. All right, and then we share out again, so that's one. Um, have any questions?
No, again, is it through like SA, I mean, mostly our SAUSD, right?
Yes.
You know, I think we can reach out to them, see how we can maybe, I mean, we do try to, you know, share information with them, but I mean, there's always a way where we could find a way to put out more information to.
Yeah, uh, we, we have several, um, uh, cross-agency meetings, right? And they all focus on different aspects of what we're doing and what the school district doing, because you always want to try to leverage those resources and not duplicate, because we're two very large agencies, and for us to duplicate and do the exact same thing, it's almost like we're cannibalizing each other, you know, and you know, at the end of the day, the effort for all of us here, all the life services, is to serve every person, right? So then that's really the goal, but what, what school do you go to, just so that for reference?
Um, no problem, no, the way how ours works is just like the simple Google sites website, and like on there, like, it's just a link to, it's like a good dealing types of different opportunities, so I'm, what I'm thinking right now, like in my mind, is like, if we discuss how we get our opportunities, okay, see which one out of them could be like the most effective as a whole for like everyone? And then share that opportunity, let's say it's like a Google website that we create, send it out to like all the schools here in San Ana.
Okay, something we can definitely look into.
And then my other question, quick. Which is for you, my friend. Um, there is the volunteer student orientation, when is the last day for teens to sign up for that? Because I did check out the website, um, it's like dot A P C N.
Uh, for the February time point, you could just show up.
Show up?
Yeah, just show up, we'll get you in, yeah.
Yeah, um, I don't know how, what this is, because like you said, you want, um, different agencies to get certain visits, but I know very broad, you know, like, um, school district, which is my school district, they partner with United Way, they're an independent organization, and they have this program where they reach out to students through high schools and stuff, um, and based on the students' interest, they connect students with companies around Orange County. So I know, personally know a friend that did an internship at Edwards Life Sciences, because she was interested in doing cellular science, and that's how she got her work experience, so I was wondering like how powerful, how powerful it is to maybe like get San Ana Unified School District to connect with, um, United Way, expose students to careers through that organization?
Yeah, we can always, I'd reach out then and put out that idea and say this was discussed by youth council, so we can definitely have an expression.
That's a resource, that, that I was, that's a good resource, I, I wasn't aware that, that we did that, so.
Okay, uh, now we'll move on to the informational items section of the agenda. I will turn it over to Brian Stersberg to present first.
All right. Thank you, members of the Youth Commission. I have a short report, uh, for you this month on all the, uh, events and programs that are notable for the San Ana Public Library. Uh, the first, uh, thing I'd like to share with you is, uh, regarding our services. So we all know that February is Black History Month, and every year we, we, we do something to honor that. Uh, we have a month filled with programs and activities that are all now currently, because our, our main library is under renovation, will be out of our New Hope location. Um, San Ana residents will be able to participate in a variety of, uh, great activities. Um, the first is, uh, Black History Month, Unity Bracelet Craft, that'll be, uh, happening at our New Hope Library, February third. We will have a conquer the canvas, um, painting program, which is designed to help participants explore and develop their artistic talents. It's for all skill levels, um, so space is limited in that for that one, because we do have supplies ready for anybody who wants to join them. The next one is a movie after noon. The next one is a movie after noon. Uh, this is to celebrate Black History Month uh by watching the movie Summer Soul from twenty twenty-one. Movie's rated PG, snacks are provided and there will be a craft involved with it as well. In addition to that, we will have be having a variety of um other programs, including a Black History Month celebration is another one I'd like to highlight for you. Um, this one is at our El Salvador Teen Time Community Center location. Uh, so this one's definitely targeted towards youth. This one's on February twenty-eighth from four to five thirty PM. And this one is just all about food and learning about some trailblazing figures um in Black History. So uh that rounds out our Black History of the Month, uh, Black History Month featured programs. The next one I'd like to share with you is a, is our Read With Me Winter Reading Program. I love this one because just like uh our Black History Month Celebration at El Salvador Community Center, this one has free food involved in it too. The only thing that you have to do for our Read With Me Winter Reading Program is read five books. Uh, and after you do that or somebody reads to you five books, if you're a little one and aren't able to read quite yet, um, you will be eligible to get a free uh meal to Panda Express, free children's meal at Panda Express. That one is running, uh, has already started and is running the entire month of February. You can visit our website um uh for more information on that one. Uh, the next one I'd like to uh talk to you about is all of our library services capital improvement. So as you all know, we have our main library under construction. We have a new library that will be opening at our Delhi, the Delhi Community Center. It's a partnership with that uh independent organization. And we are currently uh converting a portion of the community center to become a new branch of the San Antonio Public Library. But to help share with the community, um, you know, how these pro, how these projects are are moving along and and show uh people our progress. What I've done is that put each month will be putting up some new pictures of of the construction and how it's progressing and the new features going in and not only at our Delhi Library, but also at Jerome Park and our main library. So visit our website, you can see uh, you know, what our our uh, our new libraries and locations, how they're coming along, you know, what construction, uh, what kind of construction activities are happening. And to get an inside look to how we, uh, you know, modernize, improve our facilities for the entire communities. So uh, it's right on the front page of our our website. So please check that out. Outside of that, there's just a whole bunch of other programs that we have uh for the month of February. We have a peace, love and tie dye program. We have ESL classes, um, art classes, um, all sorts of good stuff, Dungeons and Dragons is on here. Of course, our teen, uh, our teen uh volunteer orientation that'll be happening February tenth. And just a bunch of other things, including a blind date with the book program that began February first. So check it all out, more info on our website and hope you enjoy all of our programs. Yeah, so what it is, is they'll typically what my staff does is they'll kind of like wrap up the books. You don't know what book you're getting, so you can see the distribution begins February first, they go quickly. I'm not sure if this one has already, all the books have have been distributed yet. But um, you know, feel free to, you know, call over to New Hope and see what's, you know, if they still have more materials to uh, uh, you know, give out. But we do this program, you know, fairly frequently, we have our blind date with the book. And the great thing about this particular uh blind date with the book is um you will have an opportunity to uh win a gift card. Uh, I think we're, yeah, we're giving away ten gift cards. Take with your book and get a free, uh, go to, you know, Starbucks and get a free, a free beverage and enjoy your book that way, free coffee. Um, and, you know, just an opportunity to connect with, you know, a book that you may have never, you know, thought about reading and you might find a new genre you really like to, to, to read or a new author. Let's just, you know, and you have not, you know, noticed or picked up anything by them. So we like this one and it's kind of, you know, gives a level of excitement to, you know, come in the library and check it out a little bit. Any other questions?
Um, I have a question, yeah, let's, I'll be on the library volunteer. So I remember looking into it, I think it applies to both volunteers and youth here. Um, for the library, it's that they're able to create like their own little workshop if they wanted to, if they wanted to create like the, this is on the website. If they, if you volunteers want to create their own workshop or like a teach a class or something at the library. And I know that the main library is under construction.
Yeah.
But I wanted to ask if that opportunity for volunteers and interns was still available at the New Hope branch as well? Or if it's not something that volunteers?
Yeah, the, the, this volunteer, I think you're just asking me where where the volunteer program will be at. Yeah, it's all focused out on the holder.
Okay, okay.
Because, yeah, we don't have our main, we're building our other locations at like at a Delhi center. So, yeah, everything is is running.
Okay, so I mean, that like when you turn your volunteer can do either maybe.
Well, would, yeah, for the most part, I mean, it's, it's less space, yeah, but for the most. We, we have all this, we're, we're, we've kind of brought over all of our programs to New Hope right now, uh, the best we can, so yes.
And then if.
We try to fit it all.
If a volunteer, if a volunteer intern wanted to do that, how would they go about that? Do they have to speak with to really set up their own kind of, you know, workshop that they have here on the, on the calendars?
Oh, now if they wanted to volunteer or they wanted to set up.
If they wanted to set up like their own, cause you know how they have like their state team, Dungeons and Dragons. I run, I read on their website that an intern can create like their own sort of special day program if they really wanted to. Propose a new idea, propose a new.
Yeah, for sure. And we also have uh um through our teen time locations, we have like a teen leadership committee that that means if you go to El Salvador or Garfield, we have it there as well. And there you, you can help plan programs and do things like that. But just, but just, I will say, just in terms of volunteering, it's a great way to share, you know, your, your, your ideas and, cause our, my staff, that's how, you know, we come up with a lot of the great programs from here in front of you guys. So just do, just do volunteering because our volunteers, they help us with our programs. You know, they're the ones who, you know, help deliver the program, you know, to the community and help us out, help us set things up. You know, through the Dungeons and Dragons program, you know, we use volunteers for many other things that we do. So it's just a great way just from the ground up to get, to get involved. And the safe program, just going back to then, you know, the, for the youth, uh, summer youth and uh employment, that's another great.
For the state, that was like a quarter one kind of thing, right?
Yeah, that's seasonal, I think it, they might have just closed recently in the applications for the safe program. I'd have to check online, but it is, it does reopen, yeah.
All right, because.
It's all online, I love you.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Next, I will invite Ethan Fisher to present the San Antonio Zoo Operations Report.
So good evening, uh, again, um, a couple of things about the zoo. Usually I take some updates on animal care operations and then some projects and education programs and events. Um, new animal that we have at the zoo that is not yet viewable to the public, but uh we're excited to have back, it's the world's smallest animal. Uh, they are very, very adorable, they're about this long. Uh, I look like ten animals, but they're actually primates, they're monkeys. Uh, they're from that Amazon basin, uh, so we're excited to have them from the, unwilling to us from Dallas, so we're wearing. Uh, in the future, we'll have them uh on habitat where you'll be able to feed them, but it's for the few years to be kept in species, so we're, um, we're excited to have them back. Uh, one thing that sometimes we pick in different animals from different places, uh, sometimes there's rescued animals, sometimes choose a new species we have. Uh, this right now is like their Mexican box herds, uh, it's a species we haven't had before. Uh, they're native forests in eastern Mexico and they're not that size, then you can find them in our expression outpost, which is sort of like our. Uh, operations updates, the playground of the zoo is one of the most popular venues. Uh, and it recently had new rubber servicing, so that it's a fall off playground, it's nice and don't get injured. Uh, we're also working on a couple of different projects. Uh, one is the high community education building, so that's going through the city plan check uh before it goes out for the date. Uh, another project is our pathways project, uh, if you've been to the zoo, you might remember there's a lot of dirt pathways. And in the winter time, they get pretty soft and it's hard for people to move through pathways. So that will work place some of them with concrete, which will be much easier for everyone. And then also for the families that have toddlers or wheelchair, they don't really wanna put your uh wheelchair in your car on the phone like he, uh, or your shoulder. Some, some other projects that are going on that are, that are not, uh, that are more and they're not animal focused projects, but they help with the safety and security of the facility would be uh the wall project. That's an infrastructure project replacing a very old wooden fence that we have, they say first grade. Uh, so that's going through, we're finishing design base. Uh, another, another part of the zoo that not everyone is aware of is the eco center at Santiago Park. Uh, that is, uh, that's a facility that opened around two thousand nine. It's, um, and it was a big program required by the Recreation Division, um, during two thousand twenty, it closed. Uh, and then now we are re-envisioning that center, uh, rebranding it, exhibits in that center and uh and staffing it from the zoo. Uh, so that's, that's one program that Lauren, that she, she oversees. We have sort of a soft opening right now, there are staff at the center and they're doing programs. There's a free science story time program, there's a art, art animals program. Uh, and there's, and there's other programs coming and then the brand new exhibits typically will be installed uh early summer, late spring, they're, they're all being fabricated right now. And they'll talk about uh the history of the San Antonio River in in that location, San Antonio Creek. They'll talk about wildlife, uh, diversity, uh, you know, talk about different cultural aspects tied to, tied to that area and our community. Uh, and then there'll be an area for art, uh, art displays, art programs. Um, and then community science too, so there's the opportunity to be involved in things like the backyard bird counts, uh, Intercoastal Cleanup Day, something that's an event that we're gonna be involved in every year where we're cleaning up the waterway. Uh, and uh one that I'm forgetting that is in Cultura is uh City Nature Challenge, when is that coming up Lauren? April, so that's a, that's a new program for us to be involved in. Uh, you document, if you're familiar with iNaturalist, that's a website where you can document sightings of natural different species. And City Nature Challenge relies on iNaturalist and you document wildlife that you see in our community. Even though we're urban area, you do have quite a, quite a lot of diversity and wildlife that come through. Uh, so that's, that's something that we're starting to broadcast about, I'm excited to participate in. So a lot going on at the eco center and there's going to be more information as we solve the news that it's in the, get the center officially like re, real, re-regular. Uh, so that's going on, the big project that is everyone sees when they come to the zoo is the otter and primate trails habitat. Uh, so that will be uh aquatic space for for otters. And then there's uh three different habitats for primates, they're now only area trails, so those are the trees. Uh, that construction is moving along well, it's been taking a while, but it's getting there and it looks, it looks really neat. Uh, today they were taking down, the contractors taking down some scaffolding they were using for putting up the mesh, uh, primate habitat. And it looks, it looks really neat. So more information as that heads towards completion of construction. Uh, we mentioned before, uh, sort of tangentially related to the employment opportunities. Uh, there are volunteer opportunities at the zoo, uh, we have that on a regular basis. There's uh, there's information on the website about that. And uh, a lot of volunteers will start in education and then sometimes they move towards services. Uh, with the, with the animal care staff that we have here tonight, all the volunteers, many of them have been started as volunteers or interns. Uh, and that's kind of an industry like thing, a lot of people start that way. We have, uh, we have different veterinary volunteers before, uh, people, people go all the way through the house, but usually start as volunteers. And I think that's, that's pretty much it for right now, I'm gonna answer the question.
I mean, it's, I'm gonna keep coming to a question, I'll take, but I like a lot for the whole like privacy, I can imagine. Um, all we can like just second intersection class at San College and apology, but for that one, I know that I was like often like inspecting like all sort of different types of species, like the road structure and stuff and it's just like, like maybe like a little idea. Yeah, for the zoo could do, but like maybe, um, that's it, could be like bringing like folks to like, I mean, so that we didn't get to like, I guess, just learn like there are differences in all of that, like, I don't know, maybe just an idea.
Yeah, no, that's a great, that's a great idea. We have uh had a long history of working with different anthropology programs. Uh, I'd say every, every anthropology student in the county comes to the zoo at some point. Uh, it's kind of finding some of the college level programs. Uh, you'll see people instead of going to a monitor, watching the animals, they have to observe for so many hours. Uh, and that's, and that's, um, one of the things that we're trying to do when we're planning the, the population of animals on the planet, that's one of, uh, one of that. An original zoo, for one of the zoo, it was back in fifty-two, simply that we have that fifty monkeys at all times, which not everyone realizes, that's why it's called the monkey. Uh, that, that deed was changed a few, uh, two years ago, a year or two ago. Uh, so we don't have that requirement anymore, but we have that history and that legacy. So we do try to be involved in wide variety of conservation programs, different species and how, by representation, you're actually right. There's, I guess, I have a opinion, I'm upset, it's completely different than, uh, like our humans, which is a eight. Uh, and it's pale, completely different dietary requirements, morphology is totally different. So, uh, we try to work at the different applications and the biology of animals into the education program.
Yeah, and I mean, like, you can tie that back to the beef reasons and like, I think, I don't know, I feel like it'd be like cool for like you to like get to explore that, like actually like that's on as well. Um, I don't know, I took the research because I took my class online, but I was, I would just start at that almost for hours.
Yeah.
See what type of species it would, but, no, yeah, I think that's like a really cool opportunity, especially if you're like interested in like animal stuff and all of that.
Oh, I appreciate that. Um, I had a question about the, for like your otter project, uh, how many otters do you, uh, have right now coming to the zoo?
Uh, that's something we're still working on. Um, that's a little bit of, uh, we're so bringing animals in for as a new project that isn't complete yet. It's kind of a, uh, an interesting challenge because you don't want to bring the animals in too soon. Uh, because they have, have it written right, but then you also have to balance the actual availability of the animals uh from other facilities that are coming from. Is that most of the species we, we have at the zoo are different collaborative, uh, captive breeding programs? So, uh, there, you have to be responsible as you, uh, breed animals and manage them so that you're not having lots of animals, or enough animals, what have you. Uh, so we don't have that specific otters again type quite yet, but we're working on that right now. That is, that's one of, uh, that is one of the items that is on the queue for the animal care team.
Oh, sure. Um, so I'm looking at the, if I can watch it, please, we have a picture, I guess, a new picture.
Thanks, we can do it after.
I'm sure, I know you guys are, the zoos are out a lot of community events, it's just really cool to see. I see all the kids going up to those, have a lot of fun. Uh, I was just wondering, do you guys have any programs that you go, you just go during the school day? If you're able to go during the school day, if kids wanted to and just set up like a little presentation or a little assembly for them to really get them aware of what. To really get them aware of like what they have in the community of all the, the animals that they have and just to learn about them?
Um, yeah, so, uh, thank you for, for seeing us at different events, uh. Uh, Janelle, one of the education specialists, she was here earlier tonight, and she's one of the primary people that does that outreach. Uh, she does the infield park pop-up, so that's a program where we show up in different parks. Uh, we used to do a zoom mobile programs where we'd go to different primarily preschools and do presentations. It's something that would be more appropriate back in different capacity, uh, more focused on the same animal community, that's what maybe I'm saying. Uh, but how it is. We're been quite cool that out yet, uh, and then we also have the. Zoo Need, the Zoom Mobile Band, which, uh, is kind of like the cousin of, of Recreology, which is the Recreation Outreach Band, and then, then also. Uh, uh, the library, library bands, so we, that's another, especially how they go to schools. Uh, so, I think a hundred percent answer your question, but that is, that is a program that we're looking at. And in a way that we've been layered into a holistic program that will say youth education. A program that we do at the zoo, that is sort of a little bit limited in nature right now, it's near. Uh, all elementary schools, um, is a, the, the program where students come to the zoo for their educational thing. And it's not, it's goes beyond the field because the actual curriculum that is presented during that day. Was spoken of between the school district and the zoo education team. Uh, so the teachers come with the students and, uh, there may be nature journaling as part of the day. There may be animal observations, uh, it incorporates natural science elements, uh, all of that, so that's. And then, and then the students come on a regular basis, but the program we do, Heroes Elementary School, and.
Harper and.
Thank you.
And then to, you may want to answer your question, um, we're currently doing. The fourteen or fifteen different career day requests, so we're right over the first thing, different career days, yeah.
Thank you.
If they are single, that, alright. Yeah, there's, we're busy, for sure, we're small, even.
I think it was answering your question.
Yeah, but we do, we do try to think about different points for the different ages. Uh, starting from, from youth that are not in school to, uh, different age groups, uh, for our institutional group.
Well, let's, now, is there any Youth Commission member comments, Youth Commissioner member?
Um, thank you for your presentation, Stephen, uh, I really enjoyed it, and, um. Thank you.
Youth Commissioner member, here it is.
I mean, as always, the meetings are always very constructive of this one, I think. Going back to the idea of like what Adrian had mentioned about resources, um, I think. There's definitely more we can all do together, because we're all, we all have like different knowledge, and if we just get it all together, like. I feel like we can really do something with it, so.
Youth Commissioner member, here it is.
Um, thank you also, Ethan, and really after your presentation, and I appreciated the vast amount of knowledge that you've given to give us all. Um, I definitely will be spending time at the zoo, I always do, my family, I always go to the zoo, especially. All the animals, the playgrounds. Uh, I do think the playground renovation thing, I did see that the playground under construction didn't, isn't really as planned, yeah. Um, and I started having this, who is also something which my brother and I have been reading books now. Um, will definitely. Excited to keep him coming, thank you.
Youth Commissioner member, Hernandez?
Uh, of course, there's, I'm just, I'm worried how much we're going to be back soon, and I really don't know.
You think, I am.
Youth Commissioner member, Ramirez?
Uh, thank you, thank you to everybody who presented from the zoo, from the library, thank you for putting those reports together. It's really nice to be able to have all this on one file, just to see what's going on with, uh, kind of with these different aspects of our city, and how they're really. Working to benefit our new, and so I'm really excited to see where you guys take it next, and thank you guys for your work so far.
Vice Chair, any test?
Hi, I'm just, I'm just. Uh, um, also, we're gonna slice the back of the.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for, uh, giving us these presentations. Always have very informational, which is always nice to see and hear. And thank you, uh, commissioners for coming. After all, today, we did have everybody show up, so that was awesome. And, yeah, I'd like to thank you all. Uh, and thank you Director Hawk Scott, do you have any thoughts?
Actually, I do, and I actually have a special guest that's gonna talk, but first, um, back to the, uh. Give you guys, I think, I believe you have to set up a special meeting, I would like, you know, a couple things I was thinking. One, I'd like to give you guys a crash course with our aquatics team, I wanna kind of, that's something you guys be interested in. Kind of what our life kind of feeling, kind of trying to go through, and maybe get you guys up to a pool for a couple hours, just to see what they do, is that something you'd be interested in, one. Uh, two, um, I would like to set up a date for you guys to get an in-depth tour of the zoo with Ethan and his team. I'm assuming it's probably gonna be maybe on a Saturday or Sunday, because of which you guys, am I correct on that? You know, maybe like a Saturday morning, you know, I can float out some dates to you guys, um, do you want to, February and March, you know, so. You know, that's something to think about, I think maybe, because you guys do have spring break, uh, in March, right? I believe so, maybe in April, I mean, you guys, in the February, like, one of two. But again, just, I, I wanna find a date where all seven, it's great seeing all seven of you guys, it, it, it's awesome, because nobody commission does it, so I like that. You know, you guys will be okay, go pay me on this, I love it. So I'll, uh, pull up the dates, and you know, every March, it will be all coming on a date. And last but not least, I want to introduce, uh, one of our supervisors, uh, Juan Lada. Uh, he oversees our senior programming, so this is one of his facilities. And I just wanted him just to talk a little bit of what we do with our seniors, the vision he has had. And, you know, from our counselors, it gives a little bit of a fight for our seniors, for us to do a lot more with our senior programming and excursion, so. I'm gonna turn around for about five minutes, just to give you a brief overview, because we are a good facility, Mr. Lada?
We'll make it two minutes, how about that? I think just kidding, uh, good evening, and, uh, welcome again to the San Ana Senior Center. As you heard from Hawk, um, I am the senior supervisor, and this is one of our two senior centers in the city. The second one being the Southwest Senior Center, I'm at the center, just off of, uh, Jerome Park. Um, so the senior centers operate Monday through Friday, uh, we're open from A A.M. to R.P.M. And seniors have an array of different programs and activities that they can participate, uh, here on a daily basis. You have a, a small description of, of what we provide, uh, on the total magazine pages thirty-two and thirty-three. But a couple of the programs that I did wanna highlight for your information, one is our daily meal program. So our seniors have the opportunity to come in and enjoy a, uh, carefully, uh, you know, cooked and warm meal on a daily basis. Here at the facility, and also for those seniors that are either not longer able to drive or do not have access to a vehicle. We also do provide a transportation program that brings them daily to the senior center, and then takes them back home at the end of the day. In addition to that, the transportation program also offers additional, uh, uh, opportunities for them to go and do their shopping. Um, to participate in a walking club, and to go on little mini expirations, uh, throughout the, uh, the city as well. Um, but talking about ex- uh, expirions, uh, what has had our seniors very excited for the, uh, last year or so. Has been the return of our excursion program for seniors, and this is where we actually go on, uh, uh, charter buses. To different destinations and in, in, you know, the Southern California, uh, area. Uh, last month, we took them to the Ronald Reagan Considential Library and Museum in Simi Valley, and they very much enjoyed it. Not a single one of our seniors had ever been there, and they really, really enjoyed that experience. But they're more excited about this one's, uh, uh, field trip, because we'll be taking them to Sebo, uh, on the Pony. Uh, and we have not yet told them where we're taking them in February, and in March, sorry, and in March, because in March, we're taking them to Diddin. You know, so this is a great opportunity for us seniors, all of the excursions are completely free of charges. You know, so we're paying for their admission, and obviously, we're paying for transportation. Um, you know, so they're very, very excited, they actually become, just like you guys, to me, just looking forward to those excursion. Obviously, we wanna take as many of them as we can, because you can imagine, it's a little bit challenging for us to do so. You know, but, you know, we hope to be able to continue with this type of, uh, funding for these type of programs. So that year in, year out, then we give, uh, for seniors, certain opportunities to have those experiences as well. You know, but, um, again, you know, our, uh, monthly celebrations are always a, a, a hit, you, if you're ever, uh, available. Um, you know, you're welcome to join us for one of those, uh, the events, you have the dates for the next ones. Uh, Goshen Patrick's Day on March nineteenth, uh, the Spring Celebration on April sixteen, and then our Mother's Day Celebration on, uh, May, uh, fourteen. Obviously, those are during our regular programming hours, which is during the week, which is when you're in school. But if it ever happens to work and you are in, please join us, especially over, uh, the summer, when you may be on vacation. Um, but again, you know, it helps us to promote our programs and services to our seniors. If you have grandparents that are home with, uh, nothing to do, or interested in being a little more active. Please in person to, to join us, because again, from, uh, fitness to just sitting down, socializing over a warm meal. Or doing some, uh, you know, uh, arts and crafts, uh, coloring in the orgates. There's plenty for them to, to choose from, uh, above our senior centers, so. We hope to see you paying us a visit in the future, but again, we, uh, would appreciate your support and continuing to promote, uh, our senior centers and all the programs and services as well. Okay, any questions? Oh, boy, yes.
Um, I was just thinking right now, like, to be able to get more people to, like, attend these, like, event procedures. I would, I don't know if you've grown like the, that in the preschool districts like face, but. Every single school, I believe, has a base liaison, and basically very, um, they just outreach to like the families and stuff, but I would like maybe. I don't know, like, all of us here, if you do attend with that, uh, district school, um. Forward this to your face, maybe, but, yeah, and then also for you guys as well.
Absolutely, and we're always willing and able to come and present to any group organization that's interested in hearing more about our programs. But just so that you know, these, uh, activities, especially the excursion, are so popular that we end up with very long meetings. So it's not that we're lacking for participation, we actually just wish we had more of an opportunity to take more of it, because of funding and staffing and so on and so forth. It becomes a low challenge. Uh, you know, and we do have a requirement that they need to be registered and active participants at the center. In order to be able to take advantage of, 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 of this type of program, okay?
Yes, uh, how do I sign my, my grandparents up for like inspiration or sharing these programs?
Well, uh, as you just already mentioned, they have to be, uh, registered and active participants at either one of our senior centers. So all you gotta do is have them call the senior center of their choice, again, if they wanna, uh, be regular participants here, then they'll call here and make an appointment. And same thing for Southwest, then our staff will, uh, help them through the registration process, uh, for them to get a tour of the facility, and then just get them going. Uh, and as soon as they start coming on a regular basis, then they can also, uh, then begin to participate in the excursions. Okay, but again, don't just focus on the excursions, because that's, you know, once a month, we have daily activities at the centers every day, and they're also a lot of fun. Okay? Anything else? Sure, you know, absolutely, uh, I get that the focus, uh, uh, of my team currently is just to actually deliver the programs and services. But we are working with our community engagement team to develop more partnerships and sponsorship opportunities. But whatever support, uh, you can lend to that effort is more than all. Okay?
Sure.
Well, thank you for your time, pleasure meeting you all, and, uh, you're welcome to visit us at, at, at any time.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. So last thing, how does March first sound, it's a Saturday, you're at the zoo.
March, yeah, okay, March first is up, March eighth?
March eighth?
March eighth. March eighth? I mean, there's February, there's February, uh. Yeah, there's.
I'm trying to check, I'm not sure that as far as dates are free.
No, we can do it in the afternoon. March, March eighth afternoon, what's that sound?
Like three?
Like, yeah, like, yeah, the zoo closes at four, just kidding. We're, I mean, we know some people, we know, we know some people.
Yeah. Alright, Ethan. Well, the next Youth Commission meeting is scheduled for Monday, March seventeenth, in the City Council Chamber at six P.M. Before the commission, I hear by a jury meeting at seven eleven P.M.